City Council meeting for September the 3rd, 2024. Before we get started, I appreciate your patience. We're having some technological challenges right now. We're going to go ahead and move through the committee of the whole and take a timeout before going straight into our agenda, a regular scheduled meeting to see where we are with the technology. So I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. Okay. The council should have the minutes from the August 20th committee of the whole. Any additions or corrections those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes from the committee of the whole from August the 20th are carried forth. Legislative discussion, council member Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As we discussed last time, the state has seen fit to exempt three categories of products from income tax, excuse me, sales tax. And the three categories were hearing devices, agricultural fencing, and honeybee byproducts. And I was just curious at the time if the city was generally following the state's lead on exempting various categories. And we learned at the last meeting that there are numerous categories the state has exempted that we have not followed suit. So I asked the city manager today if she could give us an overview of what types of things the state has exempted and where we have not fallen in line with their policies. I know it's in general.
And so I believe the answer to that is that the city of Auburn has never taken on, you know, not collecting sales taxes on any individual item that the state has done that with. Is that correct?
Correct, other than the sales tax holidays that you guys adopted on an annual basis, severe weather preparedness, and back to school. And so I think Councilman Griswold, if you, everybody will recall, he had reached out over the weekend. You had not asked collectively as a body that we do further research on this. There was going to be a general discussion tonight. And he and I had some email, just, I can generally speak to, there are about 55 of these that are in state code. They run from sawdust to things like you see here. Honeybee byproducts and so on tend to be very specific. We were not prepared to discuss those with you, and you certainly weren't asking, you just needed a general idea. And so they get very specific. Most of these, they have a few things in common. Some run in perpetuity, but a number of the ones that are just up for general discussion tonight has some sort of sunset provision on them. And that's been a common kind of denominator of the legislature lately is they will do something, but it will be for a limited amount of years, and it could be up for next session. I think another commonality you see is there's been multiple attempts at a bill to exempt feminine products, diapers, other type things from sales taxes. That bill did not pass last session, but it's very likely to come up this session. And we have kind of seen a light pattern. And when these things get proposed eventually, and after much kind of change sometimes in the bill, they eventually do get adopted for a period of time by the legislature. I think also since our last meeting, important to note that on the hearing aids, Madison had exempted in Madison, Alabama, the city of, the city of Opelika did, at the very meeting you were discussing even, having a discussion about this topic tonight, the city of Opelika did adopt that exemption. One other important thing of note is when we do commercial development incentives, we never share sales taxes that we allocate to Auburn City Schools out of our, out of our 4%. 1.25% is reserved for Auburn City Schools. We don't have the ability on any of these bills to do that. It's an all or nothing situation. And also, state sales tax at 4% is exempted, but there is a 1% county tax that is not exempted also as part of that, just for your reference and general information broadly speaking.
Good. Thank you for that information.
Thank you. And I wasn't advocating one way or another about this. I was especially curious about medical devices, and you've answered the question in terms of what our sister city does, what Madison does. I don't see any reason for us to further pursue this in the, for upcoming discussions, unless there's anybody that feels really strongly about trying to follow the state's lead.
Anyone on the council like to respond or have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say that I feel like on the hearing devices, I don't think that amount of taxes is going to hurt the city that much. And I think it would mean a lot to the person that has hearing problems, cannot hear not to have to pay tax on it. It's my feeling about it, as well as the agricultural wire and the honeybee stuff. I just feel like that's a low, we don't sell much of that in Auburn at all. And I think, I don't think it hurt the city for, I think it'd do the person, citizen, a lot of good to be able to get, not have to pay taxes on it, because especially with today's economy like it is, inflation's killing us. And that's the reason I had a problem wanting to follow along with the state. But I can see your argument why not to, but I just feel like it would be a chance to help some of the folks out, especially the hearing devices.
Anyone else have a comment or response, thought? You know, I'll reiterate what I said last time, and I appreciate Kelly bringing this forward, and he was asked to by a constituent. You know, in our state, we've made a fundamental decision, I believe, as a state, that we want our municipal governments to be supported in a runoff sales tax. In my lifetime, I've seen that decision made in Auburn, I think at least three times, where the citizens have not voted for a property tax. And so that is what it is. And so sales tax is what supports our government. You'll see tonight that it supports 50% of our general fund, right at 50% is sales taxes. Hearing devices, ag fencing, beekeeping products, as Chief Dawson said, none of those are going to really register probably in a great deal as far as affecting our sales taxes, affecting our budget. The concern I have is what's next, and how do we, how do we pick winners and choose, winners and losers in this as we move forward? I'm certainly open to continuing this discussion, but I think it's a slope that could get slippery if we're not careful. And I certainly, none of us knew that the state legislature was considering this this past year, and who knows what they'll be considering in years to come. So just, those are my, those are some general thoughts I have. So with no further comment, the decision point for us tonight is, I think we can do a couple of things. We can, we can, we can just let this go. If there's not support for it, we can certainly bring it up again in the future, or we could maybe ask the staff for some more research, if they've got more time, to bring back what other items have been that they are not collecting state sales tax, and if the municipalities have considered that. Or we could, we could look at something specific. Chief Dawson has mentioned hearing aids, asking the staff put together some type of resolution ordinance about hearing aids. Those are our decision points. If anybody has any thoughts on that?
Mayor, I feel like if we, if we were to consider moving forward with a decision on this, no, I personally would need more information on what's already exempted to make sure that any decision we make would be consistent, consistent across the board. If there are other, I think you said 50-some-odd state exemptions, if we were to exempt hearing aids in this instance, and there are other medical devices that the state's already exempted, then I feel like we would, we'd be compelled to also consider exempting those as well. So I would want to have that information before we made a decision on.
Question to clarify something that I just heard. Are there 50-something that the state is exempting, and we're only looking at three? Or are there just three at the state level?
Over the years, implemented in a certain section of the state code, there are 55 such items. And I think-
They continue on year to year?
Yeah, they continue on year to year. And there's also, just in this decade, there's been consideration of approximately 28 similar sales tax exemption bills, with nine of them seeing success. So it is a constant legislative influx, and they are sometimes very, very minute. If you really look at the legislation about honeybee byproducts, it's a very, very specific, narrow focus. And some of the very light research we've done has to do with border cities, like the hearing aid bill came up in part because border cities were saying, well, it's exempted in the adjacent states. And so that, that's why legislator brought it up. So it kind of just, and they're saying that because, well, they're losing sales. So it really just kind of depends on what you want to do. But they, a lot of them are agricultural focused, that's very common. But as I said, there's a thing, and I mean, it runs the gamut from feminine products to diapers to other, you know, other items along that realm that keeps coming up and may eventually pass. And to remind you, I mean, when the state legislature passes these, that's the 4% state sales taxes automatically removed at the implementation date. And all of these current three bills have a 2029 sunset date anyway, unless the legislature does something else.
Any other question? Well, Tyler offered a comment of wanting to have some further research done to understand some of these other 50-some-odd items that we have referred to tonight. That is something we could ask the staff to do and bring this back maybe in a month, and have another discussion, if that's what the council wishes are. We could let this go and move on. So what would be, anybody have a thought?
I think it's time to move on, Mayor. I don't think there's much support for it. And so I think we just need to move on and not burden the staff or anything further.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
Agree.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, we'll move ahead then. All right. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Okay. City manager, anything for us?
Just a report that there's a widespread issue a little bit with this. So we are recording, but we will not be able to broadcast live, and we will post both meetings later when we are able to post them. Correct, Cynthia? Do we anticipate that's immediate, or could it take a bit of time? Could take a bit of time. So we will post this, but folks that aren't here, can't hear this, will get stuff out on social media. And that also means WA and I broadcast everything, will not be live.
Okay. All right. So just a second, when we adjourn, do we need to not roll into our regular meeting?
No, you need to go ahead, and they don't anticipate this issue being corrected anytime soon.
So we'll go ahead and roll.
But I want to give you comfort that these are being recorded, video, audio, everything, and they will be available on our website as soon as we can get them posted. But I don't have a, a time for that right now.
Again, we're certainly sorry to those people who count on that technology to keep up what's going on in the council. It's just one of those things. So nobody's fault. We'll continue to try to work on it. Okay? All right, is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We are adjourned with the committee of the whole, and at this time, I'll, we are adjourned with the committee of the whole, and at this time, I'll open up the regular meeting of the Auburn City Council for September the 3rd, 2024. The roll call, Lindsey.
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Greg, do we have our video? Okay, so this is the first meeting of the month, and we're proud to introduce you to our employee of the month, as well as our other outstanding employees here in the city of Auburn.
We're proud to introduce you to our September employee of the month. I have a memorandum here from Dan Ballard, our Public Works Director. I would like to nominate Brant Prince as the September employee of the month. Brant began his career with Public Works in September of 2018 as a facilities maintenance worker. He was promoted to facilities maintenance coordinator in January of 2022. Since then, Brant has overseen 1,000 service requests for maintenance and repair of city facilities. His hard work, dedication to excellence, and positive attitude are deserving of praise and recognition. As testimony to Brant's work ethic, I present the following from his supervisor, Patrick Slaughter. Before beginning my job in Public Works, I only interacted with Brant in passing. It wasn't until I began working with Brant that I became aware of the amount of work that he handles day to day. Brant coordinates the daily maintenance and repair activities at 24 of the city's 46 buildings. This includes work on plumbing, electrical, mechanical, heating, and air conditioning systems, custodial cleaning, and supply, and supply management, and repairs of all sizes. At a minimum, Brant receives three to five service requests a day involving tasks like cleaning out dryer vents, changing light bulbs, repairing water lines, and much more. Other staff have recognized his seemingly daunting nature of his duties and have praised his work and attitude. Brant never complains, nor has a discouraging word to say about his task. For example, Brant was called upon to deal with a sewage backup in one of our city buildings. While attempting to clear the obstruction, he was sprayed with water from head to toe as the line continued to back up. Once finished, he cleaned himself off and went back to his daily duties. Even in recounting the story to coworkers, Brant wore a smile and spoke of it as just part of the job. He is an incredibly invaluable asset to the city of Auburn. Brant leads by example and represents the city's core values through his attitude, effort, and energy. For these reasons, I nominate Brant Prince for employee of the month. Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations to Brant, and congratulations and thank you to all of our other great employees who have served our community for a long, long time. Allison Edge, thank you for your 25 years. And Will, if you'll tell Chief Langford, thank you for his 30 years. We appreciate all of their efforts. During the committee of the whole tonight, the city council had a discussion related to recent legislative sales tax decisions that were made in Montgomery with the state legislature. Councilman Griswold has brought this forward. Ultimately, after discussion, the city council has decided not to move or take action on this at this point in time. Under Mayor's announcements tonight, I want to thank the members of the RFID lab here in the city of Auburn with the Harvard College of Business for a tour recently. I'm not sure I really understood what went on in RFID lab until I spent an hour with them, and very fascinating, very interesting, the research that is going on there, and the bright minds that are working on our future. Very, very interesting. Certainly want to thank the chamber and for their legislative breakfast recently. Sorry I had to get up and leave with a poor scheduling effort, but it was a great time, a big crowd over at BCOM, and very informative with our county delegation. Also, I want to tell the chamber, thank you for the blessing on the corner. This past Friday, there was a sizable crowd, early Friday morning over at Tumer's Corner for a sweet time and a sweet message as we get ready for academic year and the football season to start. Certainly want to thank Coach Wheatley, the volleyball coach at Auburn High School. He invited me to be the celebrity first server at their first home game recently against Enterprise. I have served a volleyball before, but it was underhanded and on the beach, and doing it in a high school gym with 700 screaming fans, overhand, was a little daunting. I will tell you, I got it over the net. It went out of bounds, but nobody gave me too hard a time about that. But they're having a great year. It was a very exciting time, and he's going to do some exciting things with that program. This Friday night is the Auburn Opelika game, the big rivalry here in East Alabama. And if you don't have anything to do on Friday night at Duck Sanford Park, it'll be a great game between two undefeated teams. And I want to thank Neely Caldwell, who's the executive director of the Christian Women's Job Corps, for inviting me recently to their annual luncheon. Auburn co-defensive coordinator Charles Kelly was a speaker, and he did an excellent job, and it was an excellent lunch and a great organization. Anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to add? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, I recently met with the officers of the Auburn Student Veterans Association, and they're in the middle of planning what they call Operation Iron Ruck. And it's, when they say ruck, you're talking about carrying a backpack from one place to another. And the Auburn Student Veterans Association works alongside the University of Alabama, equivalent of that organization, which is an unusual thing to start with, that we cooperate a little bit. But their intent is to raise awareness for veteran suicide, and they're always looking for sponsors and whatnot. And that'll happen the, during the preparation for the Iron Bowl, they move the game ball from one campus to the other, and they bring it into the stadium and present it to the, to the officials for the game. Any proceeds that come out of that go to the efforts to reduce the number of veteran suicides. And the good news is that last year, when they were planning this, we had 22 suicides a day for veterans, and we are down now to 17. So it's good news that we've had a reduction, but it's terrible news that we still have 17 veterans taking their lives on a daily basis. So I just want to say, if you happen to know a veteran who is having some difficulty, please get involved in their life, get help. There's lots of places that can reach out and help. The Student Veterans Association is certainly one of them, but that's just one of many. So please keep an eye out for our veterans that might be having some problems.
Thank you. Kelly, anyone else? Yes, sir. Sunny?
As we continue to watch our streets get paved and striped, it's a beautiful thing. I turned onto Mitchum Avenue, and the last time I was there, I had to search for the stripes. I couldn't tell if I was in a lane or not, but it is gorgeous now. And this is the road that runs along the old train depot. And it's not a, not a long road, but it is really a transformation. It's nice to see Auburn get a little more beautiful. So thank you for the city staff, whatever part was played in that, and we appreciate the funds, I guess, matching from state of Alabama.
I've met a lot of folks in my career that couldn't see the lines in the middle of the road.
Even when they were there.
Having the same problem with you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank the staff, the directors and the staff of the Boys and Girls Club and their newly renovated area in Boykin. I was able to go over, and I think the mayor went also over to tour the building, and I was just so happy as to, you know, some of the, well, some of the ways that the money is being spent. And I just want everybody to know that the Boys and Girls Club is really an asset to that community. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, we provide the boys and girls with, you know, whatever it is that they may need for the Boys and Girls Club. They're doing a great job over there. It looks really, really good. So if you can, if you have time, go by and make an appointment, however you need access to get in, and check it out. It's really nice.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon.
It was great to have the Auburn family back in town for Game Day in Jurin-Hare. We're going to have four more home games in a row, including the homecoming game on September 14th. In the meantime, homecoming campaigns have been kicking off around the concourse. I'll have some more updates on the candidates and their platforms in the next meeting. Tomorrow, the Jewel Collins Smith Museum of Fine Art is hosting their Creative Cubs event. It'll be free for children ages three to five, as well as their parents or guardians. Each session includes a guided tour of the museum's exhibitions, a related storytime, and a hands-on art activity. So if that's something you're interested in, you can sign up on the university's website for free. And I wanted to highlight some statistics real quick. Full-time undergraduate employment, or enrollment, rather, is at an all-time high, just short of 25,000. And this year, over 62% of students enrolled at Auburn University are from in the state of Alabama. So that's something we're really excited to highlight. But that's all for me this week. Thank you, guys, and we're eagle.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. At this time, it's Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. We asked that you only speak to us about items that are on our agenda tonight. There are no public hearings tonight, so if there's anything on our agenda you'd like to speak to us about, now's the time to come forward to do that. You'll have five minutes to speak to the council, and we'd ask that you come forward to the podium and share your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with city manager's communications.
Mayor, under city manager's communications, we have the announcement of, I announced this at the last meeting, but we did not get any applicants, one vacancy on the West Pace Village Improvement District Board for a term that will begin immediately upon appointment and will end September 15th, 2030, I believe. Our assistant city clerk will correct me that we're going to extend that into your first meeting in October to give people adequate time instead of bringing it immediately back up.
Okay. Good. All right.
Are you ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
Does any council member have an item they wish to remove from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Eight D. Eight D.
Right, is that it?
Anyone else? Okay.
Item 8D accepts very strange utility and sidewalk easements from GAA L. Owner LLC for the Graduate Hotel, which is part of the Andrews Bookstore subdivision, first edition and revision of Lot 1 for property located at 212 West Magnolia Avenue.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Have a motion in second. I'm just, we'll be abstaining on this. Any other comments or thoughts? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the consent agenda is approved. Ordnances.
Under ordinances, item 9A amends the fiscal year 2024 mid-biennial budget. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing, none of any comments or questions?
I think it would be beneficial for those who are watching and listening to know how this is going to differentiate and what it's all about and how it's going to differentiate from one to follow. Why are we voting on this, in other words?
So every year, before we adopt a budget or a mid-biennium budget, we have to amend the current fiscal year we're in for adjustments, typically things that you have already handled, such as a rescue truck purchase of several meetings ago, that you approved that expenditure. However, we need to formally adjust the budget to address that expenditure. This has to do a lot with adjusted revenues also. We adjust our revenues, in this case typically up, not down, and so on. And you have to adjust out for legal reasons to balance out from where you thought you were going to be to where you really are. So it's picking up a lot of additions and subtractions of things that happen throughout the year, but very typical. It's rare, the vast majority of everything in here is things that you've seen. Sometimes we have to adjust salaries based on degrees or other things that come up. There's little minor adjustments, but this is what we do each and every time. Did I miss anything?
Is it safe to say the main adjustment that we're seeing is the ARPA funds?
If you're looking at big-ticket items, and that's really just moving them, but you're really moving them around in the next budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, I mean, other than that, you'll see some extra things, such as, you know, if some fees we were going to collect didn't come in as anticipated, that'll lower. You see a lot of things called carryforward. Carryforward is because we weren't able, from one fiscal year, we get right up to the end, and it'll happen this month, where we'll ask you guys to adjust next summer for things that didn't get finished in the month of September that have to carry into the month of October and bridging fiscal year. So very common, we do it every year.
Any other questions? Okay. Lindsey, we're the roll call.
Taylor.
Yes.
Bitten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9B adopts the fiscal year 2025 budget. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing, none, I would like to ask that, I'd like to make an amendment to the budget. I'd like to move to amend page two of the budget, number 3A, outside agencies. I'd like to move that number to 2,224,790. This number right now currently reads 2,130,493. This number right now currently reads 2,130,493. This is a difference of $181,947.
You have your papers.
Second.
Yeah. All right. Yes, I've handed those out to the council. Yes. So I have an amendment and a second. Any comments or questions from the council on that?
So the difference of this is, instead of level funding, there's a couple of agencies that ask for an increase, and that's what this is, is the increases that were requested from several agencies, correct?
That is exactly right.
And just to remind, this is a one-year budget that we're approving.
Absolutely.
That we're discussing.
Yes. This is a one-year budget. Starts October 1, goes to September 30.
Changes being proposed don't impact some folks that have resolutions, say like aotourism and other things that calculate airport gouge, other things that calculate. Otherwise, this is just straightforward kind of operating of outside agencies.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Have a motion of second. Megan, at this time, do we take a voice vote on the amendment?
It's on the amendment. That's fine.
Okay. All right. Lindsey, roll call on the amendment.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
No, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Bitten?
No, ma'am.
Anders?
city manager and her staff in putting together a very comprehensive budget, a very robust budget, it shows that the city is operating with a very sound fiduciary philosophy and execution, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Okay, any other comments or thoughts?
I would second that, Ms. Wood, I agree, great, great, great work in this budget, and thanks for all the hard work you guys have put into this.
Well, as I've mentioned in the past, I'd appreciate one more level of detail for the budget, and I recognize the importance of getting it approved quickly so the city can get on with doing their work, but I would prefer more detail, so I will be abstaining.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have the roll call vote on the budget as amended, Lindsey.
Bitten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal.
Abstain.
Foreman.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes. Resolutions.
All right, resolution ten A one authorizes a development agreement with Quebec Development LLC for the vintage expansion, the development agreement includes cost sharing with the city that will facilitate the widening of East University Drive from Stoker Street to Gatewood Drive and the installation of a traffic signal at East University Drive and Stoker Street.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion second, any comments or thoughts?
How?
Questions?
How is the vintage expanding? I couldn't find any detail, not that it's that relevant, but I was just curious.
So the memo in your packet, there's an expansion, that's just the name of the development, so if you're on East University Drive and you're standing at the private driveway that goes to an apartment complex, the vintage restaurant and associated offices are on your left, on your right, there is a multitude of uses that were approved from some townhouses to a banquet drive-through and another commercial building that will sit there, and so it kind of runs from there toward Brewster's, and so it's a development you'd approved a while ago from a conditional use perspective, but this is now the expansion piece. To the credit of the development team here, they've been working with staff for some time to get this done, when the original vintage buildings were done, there was a desire to get a traffic signal here, but the property owner of the apartment complex that sits way back off of East University Drive was not allowing access to the developments off the private driveway, that has since changed. I'll just remind you, we have Fire Station Four across the street on Stoker Street, and it's fair, our traffic engineers here, we do have more accidents than we would ever want to see at that intersection, and we need this corrected, and it's something we've long been waiting for, but without it being a true intersection where we had permission, it's been a little bit hard.
So just to clarify, it's not the restaurant that is expanding, it's just?
No, ma'am, that's correct, it's just the name of the development.
Okay, all right, anyone else? I have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Sure, at this time, we will move forward into citizens' open forum, this is an opportunity for you to address the city council about anything that is on your mind, we ask that you'll come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and we'll ask that you give us, Mr. Wilkins, you can just wait just one second, I'll let you go first, we ask that you give us your name and address for the record. Before we get started tonight, I do have a statement I would like to share and to read. I want to take a moment to address the officer-involved shooting that occurred here in our community last night. We have a tremendous group of men and women who serve and protect the city of Auburn, and often they do that at great personal risk and in circumstances that many of us could ever imagine. As a standard procedure, the investigation into this matter has been turned over to the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency. Our officers have been and will continue to be cooperative with that investigation. It is always a grave matter when a life is lost, and so, of course, we are very mindful of the pain that the families of those involved are feeling, and our thoughts and prayers are with them. But based on the advice of the city attorney's office and as been our longstanding procedure, we will not comment directly on the facts of this incident, but will allow the facts to be developed and reviewed as part of a formal investigation. Mr. Wilkins?
Good evening, my name is Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Tonight, well, first of all, no property tax would be great. Okay, tonight, we want to give you and fellow Alabamians some information about a crisis in Alabama. Pharmacy benefit managers, known as PBMs, they are the middlemen in the prescription drug industry, they don't produce anything, they don't build anything, they just dictate to local pharmacies how much they will be reimbursed for failing a prescription for the pharmacy customers. Your local pharmacies are more than the ones filling the prescription, they offer advice, they answer questions, and they help facilitate communication between the doctor. Locally owned pharmacies are at risk. Approximately three hundred independent pharmacies have closed within the last six years in Alabama. Currently, about five hundred independent pharmacies remain in Alabama. Their ability to operate is at risk because the PBMs force them to sign oppressive participation contracts to be allowed into the reimbursement networks. Pharmacies have gag orders that prevent them from discussing reasons they can fill your prescription or pricing unless the customer initiates the conversation, and even then, they face the possibility of the PBMs throwing them out of the network anyway. Spread pricing is a practice where the PBMs charge the insurer a higher price than is, oh, I'm sorry, no, go back, charges the insurer a higher price than is reimbursed to the pharmacy. The PBMs keep the spread difference. They also have clawbacks, that is where the PBMs can come back months after the fact, and they say they overpaid the reimbursement to the pharmacist, and clawback and even take money back. A local pharmacist recently had shared this PBM network did a hundred and fifty thousand dollar clawback nine months after the fact. Can you imagine paying back to somebody a hundred and fifty thousand dollars saying you were overpaid? You may have heard of some IBM, PBMs like Caremark with CVS or Express Scripts and Optimum RX, to name a few. You also have probably heard about the, some pharmacies going out of business, like Windexy, Rite Aid, and Walgreen is actually struggling. PBMs favor some chain stores and mail order services. A real life example for the unfair reimbursement is a cancer drug that costs fifty dollars, a local pharmacy like Costco could reimburse ninety seven dollars, a local drug store in the network like CVS would be reimbursed nine thousand dollars, while the mail order services would be reimbursed nineteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
Susan Bolt, eleven eighty-eight East University Drive. That is just recapping what Robert was just talking about, where the local independent pharmacies get reimbursed ninety seven dollars, the preferred provider by the PBMs gets reimbursed nine thousand, and then the mail order preferred by the PBM gets nineteen thousand two hundred dollars, so they're effectively putting that money back in their pockets. Pharmacies also, next one, pharmacies are also scored for reimbursements, PBMs rate the pharmacies based on how well the customers take their medicine, so if a customer is trying to save money by stretching their prescription, the pharmacy may get a lower rating and therefore a lower percentage reimbursement, so they are tasked with also policing the customers to take their medicine as prescribed. Currently, there is no transparency of drug pricing or fair reimbursements, an employer such as the city of Auburn may receive a rebate, but the PBMs don't have to provide any documentation to justify the cost or the rebates, so the PBMs can keep part of that reimbursement without having to show any financial data. Just FYI, Blue Cross Blue Shield is considered a nonprofit organization, so they don't have to provide financials even when requested. House Bill two thirty-eight would have corrected many of these issues for the local pharmacies, but it was indefinitely postponed May seventh of this year. In the meantime, local pharmacies are hurting financially, with some being reimbursed below their acquisition cost and some only making ten dollars per prescription filled, this all while the preferred PBM pharmacies are favored with huge reimbursements. A study group was meeting at the State House this past Thursday to discuss the topic, five pharmacists from around the state showed up to sit in and listen, they were made to leave the room. Who was allowed to stay, you ask? Lobbyists from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Business Council of Alabama, CVS, Alabama Farmers Association, and our very own Joe Lovren. Why the secrecy? Why was the public removed from the room? In July of twenty twenty-four, the Federal Trade Commission released an interim staff report that found, and I quote, "that the PBMs hold substantial influence over the independent pharmacies by imposing unfair, arbitrary, and harmful contractual terms that impact the independent pharmacies and the ability to stay in business and serve their communities." So we're asking you to take action, call your local representatives, this could affect you and you being able to fill your prescription. We ask you to call the governor and ask for a special session to address this issue. Tennessee, Kentucky, Arkansas, and five other states have already passed legislation to protect the independent pharmacies and their customers. I challenge you to speak to your local pharmacist and ask how the PBMs are affecting them because it will ultimately affect you. Thank you.
Who would be next?
Martha Shamp, three oh seven Camellia Drive. A Christian has obligations to government. Saint Paul teaches us in Romans chapter thirteen that government has legitimate authority. Quote, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." Saint Paul says, "The job of government is to punish and deter evil doers." He says, "Government officials are God's minister." So y'all are God's minister, y'all are part of government. City government of Auburn, Alabama, they are an avenger to execute wrath on him who practices evil. It is through the just punishment of evil that government serves its function, it's God's plan of holding man's sinful tendencies in check. There is no authority except from God. The authorities that exist are appointed by God, so we, as Christians, should be subject to them. Justin Martyr writes, "We pray that you, with your official power, as mayor and council, you may be found to also possess sound judgment." This mayor and council were appointed by God. I plead with you to use your rightful position, use your influence, and use your authority for good, to help the children of Auburn. I appeal to the virtues that you possess. I beg you to use it for the protection of minors, consider tenderly the needs of children and what they should be seeing at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, who would be next?
My name is Wynd Timberlake, and I live at two one three Lee Drive. Last month, I came up here and mentioned the situation with Seth Nicolek, who was the choir teacher at Drake Middle School. I wanted to explain the situation a little further to the council, just so you knew how it unfolded. A mother who had a son in his choir class learned that they were doing an activity during school that she found inappropriate for middle school age students, and so she decided to look into Seth and kind of just say, "Who is this guy? Who is this person?" And she found where he mentioned in a podcast that he had no issue with people talking to children behind parents' backs about issues of sexuality and identity, and he even went as far as to say that he had no issue with people, with telling children, or someone telling children, that they should abandon relationships with their parents if a desired outcome wasn't met. And parents raised the issue to the school board over this, and the school board was totally silent, and I think they spoke to them for two months over this, and on the second month, which the school we're meeting, I attended, there is a male teacher who is suspended for speaking too loudly at some younger male students who were about to engage in a fight, and he was intending to break up that fight, but he was suspended over it because of his voice volume. However, the school board, once again, was still silent on the issue that many parents were raising concerns about, and that's just something that everyone's been kind of noting. Furthermore, the situation begs a question over the vetting process for any school staff that has direct contact or influence over children. When it comes to protecting children from predators or predator enablers, a person's personal life is just as open to scrutiny as what's in their public records. Any beliefs and participation in organizations dictate how they interact with people or just children in general, and it must be properly evaluated. Seth was the sitting member of an organization called Pride, the president, he was the president on the executive committee for an organization called Pride on the Plains, and this matters, of course, again, because Seth's statements reflect the views that are commonly held in other LGBT organizations like PFLAG or pretty much any of them, and, I mean, there is another teacher that is on the board of that organization, and I actually checked to see if I could, like, look at his information, like, on the Auburn School's website, and whatever his profile may be, is either, it either wasn't ever there or it's been removed, and I find this concerning because, to me, it shows a concerted effort to either, you know, kind of cover, put under the rug what was going on, and it concerns people, how it?
Thank you, sir.
No, that's, that phone belonged, that they were recording the meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
Who'll be next?
My name is Harriet Huggins, I live at six three one South Dean Road. This is, September is library month, and I want to say thank you and commend the library staff at the Auburn Public Library for the rich diversity of not only their collection, but reflecting the rich diversity of this community. I appreciate all, in addition, I appreciate the variety of programs that are available to the community, participated in the local authors' programs, and it was a lot of fun to meet people who are living in Auburn and doing well in the literary realm. So, thanks again to all the folks at the library for their hospitality and welcoming and providing for us a great collection.
Thank you, who will be next?
Hi, I'm Deborah Beal, eight oh two Tullahoma Drive, and I want to particularly thank you for bringing up the rock march. It really means a lot to my family, I have a veteran in the family who's on a hundred percent disability, and that issue comes up with those stresses, as well as with stresses caused in other areas with other organizations I'm involved in, and as you've witnessed tonight. Also, the library, I was here two months ago, now it's the September through October learning challenge where you can read again, log your thousand minutes, and now the weather eventually will start getting cooler, cooler, and you can get your little hoodie, and so I wanted to remind you all of that. But today, I'm really here to talk about pickleball in the city of Auburn. I used to hear a lot about it, and I thought the people involved in it were in a cult, and, because I'm sure you all agree, and then I started playing, and yes, it is a cult, and I'm a member now. So, and I've been playing for three years, and we've been playing on this cracked courts and out in the sun, and we are so excited, we know it's still going to be a couple months till we can get on those courts, but this weekend, there were thirty-three people out there from seven thirty to ten to play on the twenty available spots on the courts that we have now that are all cracked up, and on Labor Day, again, from seven thirty to ten, there were thirty-three people out there to play. So that's five courts, four spots, twenty spots, and there's all these people waiting to play, and we're there that early because it's hot, but the covered courts will make our lives so much better next year, we appreciate the money that you gave towards that and allocated our funds that way, and that's all I wanted to say today, thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like the Parks and Rec staff are going to have to have a sign up policy, huh? All right, who will be next? Okay, we'll close citizens' communications, anyone on the council have anything they'd like to add before we adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Just wanted to respond to Mr. Timberlake when he appeared before this body two weeks ago. He, I believe he stated something to the effect that he felt that there were twenty-five percent LGBTQ plus content in the teens nonfiction section of the library, and it prompted me to ask some questions about the content, and I know that in twenty twenty-three, this council, all of us were fortunate enough to have a tour of our library, and the, I just wanted to, of our library, of eighty-five thousand print collection, there is less than one half percent of any content regarding LGBTQ plus and gender issues. With regards to the nonfiction teen section, there are some titles that have been moved to the teen section from younger readers, I believe, at the request of the public, so that content does not make three percent in the teen nonfiction section, I just wanted to remind everybody of the degree of content in our library is reflective of our community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Bolt, Mr. Wilkins, I appreciate y'all bringing up the issue about PBMs, I think it's a very important issue that people need to be made aware of. We have three wonderful independent pharmacies in our community, and I know that all three of them are struggling greatly because of this issue. It's something that I would encourage the public to learn more about and consider calling your state representative and expressing your views on that, but thank you very much for bringing up this very important issue.
I'd be glad to answer any questions somebody has.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, is there a move to adjourn? All right, we adjourn.